Hello, welcome everyone to the City Council Planning, Development and Environment Committee of the Issaquah City Council. I am here tonight. My name is Councilmember Hunt and I'm here tonight with Council President Walsh and Council Deputy President Hall. There will be multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There will be a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and committee question and answer period on tonight's two agenda items. And as a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meeting. I will note for the record that we have no members of the public in the audience at this time, and I'll check in with city clerk if we have any members of the public online.
Chair Hunt, we have no virtual attendees.
All right, thank you very much. Then as a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. And with that, we will move on to our first item, which is approval of the minutes. And these are the minutes from the May 2nd meeting. Do we have any comments or concerns about those? All right, then I move to approve the minutes of the May 2nd meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. And we will move on to our first regular agenda item, which is ID 1402, Amendments to Title 18 Regarding Diversity of Housing. And this will be presented by Kristen Leeson, Senior Planner. Kristen, please take it away.
I am Kristen Leeson, Senior Planner, Community Planning and Development Department. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to have you all review our proposed amendments to Title 18, and then to make a recommendation to the full council. Same direction is needed, to get feedback from you all and to make a recommendation to council. So you've probably by this point recognized the housing continuum. And just as a reminder, tonight, we are talking about the Housing Action Work Plan, and particularly this section here in gold, Market Rate Rental and Ownership Housing. Just a little background, in 2017, we adopted the Housing Action Work Plan, which has nine strategies in it. We have slowly been implementing it, but in 2022, received a grant, Housing Action Plan Implementation Grant, from the Department of Commerce for $100,000. With that, our intent was to implement Strategies Six, which is Inclusionary Zoning, Seven, which is Removing Deterrence to Condominium Development, and Eight, which is Diversity of Housing. We came to you all in April with our findings on that, and talked at very high level what we had found. And our overall findings on this was that it is going to require a bigger policy discussion. There are things we can fix in the development code, things that we cannot fix, and we need to finish the parking study first before we can have a comprehensive policy discussion about this, and that's 2024. So the direction from you all, and our recommendation, your direction, was to proceed with high-level amendments to Strategy Eight. The Strategy Eight, Diversity of Housing, says to incorporate code provisions to increase the potential diversity of housing types built in the city. The types that we looked at, and as a reminder, we only looked at zones that include multifamily housing, mixed-use and multifamily zones, because at the time, we were anticipating changes from the state regarding single-family and weren't ready to talk about this yet because we didn't know what they were going to require. So in the multifamily zones, we looked at cottage housing, courtyard housing, and microunits. Our immediate issues here were that we had no definitions in the code, and they're not included or allowed as permitted uses in the permitted uses table. But really, they could be built. We just, we actually had a microunit developer come to us and say, "I would like to build there, but we can't." And we didn't realize it, but you can. We just, it's not defined, and we don't know where you can do it. So that's what we're trying to do here. The first is the proposed definition for cottage housing development, which means detached single-family housing in a cluster of four to 12 dwelling units around a central open space, providing residences for households that are no larger than 1,700 square feet. Units may share use of common facilities such as party room, tool room, garden orchard, workshop, or parking areas. Next definition we're proposing is courtyard housing. We used to call them courtyard, we were calling them courtyard apartments, and the Planning Policy Commission said, "Well, they could be owned or rented, so let's please call it housing." So that's what we've done. It means a development of six or more attached dwelling units located in one or more buildings, arranged in two or three sides, around a central courtyard or lawn area, which all units have access to. Developments are typically one to three stories. Last definition that we would include is for microunits. Or, and we double-checked, PPC, the Planning Policy Commission, asked if single-room occupancies were the same thing, and we did some research and talked to the city attorney, and indeed they are. So we've included that as well. Microunits or single-room occupancy means apartments that are no more than 400 square feet. These units may include private bathroom and kitchen spaces, or have access to shared kitchens, bathrooms, and community space. Our last amendment would be to include these in the Table of Permitted Uses, and I apologize for the size of this, it's kind of small. We propose that courtyard housing be included in multifamily High/ multifamily East Sunset, multifamily Medium/ multifamily Old Town, and mixed-use residential. That cottage housing be allowed in multifamily High/ multifamily High East Sunset, and multifamily Medium/ multifamily Medium Old Town. And that microunits be allowed in the mixed-use residential, mixed-use Central Issaquah and Urban Core. Our proposed next steps are that this would go to the June 26 council meeting for council action. And I should note that in order to get some of the funding that we got for the grant, that any amendments need to be approved by June 30th. So again, that's the end. Direction needed is to provide feedback on the proposed amendments and make a recommendation to full city council. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions? That's President Walsh.
Thanks. I know during the PPC meeting, they were talking a little bit about whether, where we would get the most use out of putting the courtyard housing, and how, while it makes sense in multifamily high, as far as it could be built there, by being built there, it would actually reduce the density. So do we have any feedback on that? Is the sense that we would still include it as a possibility there, but it just probably wouldn't get built because if a developer had that land, they would want to build something more dense?
Correct. I mean, that's generally what they do, is want to feel, want to, you know, get the biggest bang for their buck. Maybe it's a small lot. There are several single-family houses in smaller developments in multifamily high. So, you know, this is multifamily high sunset, or east sunset, that's a perfect location for this kind of thing. You know, if they're generally, the heights are lower on east sunset, so that would be an ideal development on there.
Okay. I was just trying to see whether we felt like because we're including in something that could be more dense, that we were kind of creating a situation where we were going to get less density by adding it in.
But we also allow single-family houses, duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. So these are actually a little bit more dense.
Do we have any other questions? Okay. So this was a question that came up at PPC, but has there been interest in these kinds of housing types? And also, they were allowed, but, you know, have people to the Community Development Department and asked about this?
Microunits, I had somebody ask me about that one time, and he said, "I'd like to do that there, but you all don't allow them." And the other one was cottage housing, and we've had a couple of developers come in and want to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. I'll check in. There is still no members of the community in the audience. Are there any members of the public online?
Chair Hunt, still no online attendees.
All right. Then we will move into council discussion on this item. That's President Walsh.
I think adding definitions for something that we are okay building and defining where they can be built is a good thing to do. Whether this actually solves any of our problems, or really enables development, I don't know. I feel slightly bad that this is our response to the happy grant, but that being said, yes, I agree that these are things to do, so.
I can go next. I feel similarly. I was at the PPC meeting for this topic, went to thank them for their service as volunteers to the city, and then watched their discussion on this topic, and I think they did a good job making sure that the definitions were clear and accessible. That said, I think this is a very small step, and it would be good to take more meaningful steps to address what is a really big challenge for our community, which is the lack of housing diversity. So my question, I guess, would be therefore, what are the next steps? You mentioned the parking study, but in the intermediate timeframe, are there things that we could look at in this committee that we could consider for increasing the diversity of housing? Because this, as has been stated, this is adding definitions, but these were already allowed in our code.
So we do have the two single-family housing bills that came up that were approved. We have 1110 and 1337, which both require that the city allow more units on anywhere where single-family dwellings are allowed. So we need to be looking at that. That one doesn't have to go into effect until January of 2025, but we're already starting to look at it. So discussions will come before that. Probably part is the comprehensive plan when we do the housing element as well. We also, yeah, this, we have to wait on the parking study, but, you know, that will help us look at things, you know, there are high development costs, high land costs, high water tables, things we can't do anything about. But we can look at our allowable densities, our allowable heights, the amount of affordable housing that we allowed in the meantime, and start, you know, dialing each one of those up and down to start tweaking and figure out what we need to do to make the rest of it happen in the multifamily zones as well.
And my impression was we hadn't yet gotten rid of, you know, the levers for inclusionary zoning, but that will also be part of the discussion.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, no, I agree, I'm going to support the ID. I honestly, this feels fairly, and that's because the Planning Policy spent several hours on this meeting. I want to thank you for being such a good facilitator. I watch them both on YouTube, they have very fascinating conversations, and they were very quick to get to parking on several times, I think it's telling. So once the parking study kind of comes forward, that conversation, but this seems like a common sense solution. So, yes.
All right. Anything else from us? Okay, do you have what you need on this item?
I do, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move to our second and final item, which is ID 1320, which is the 2024 to 2029 Capital Improvement Plan. This will be presented by Andrea Snyder, Deputy City Administrator.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Just one moment while I pull up the presentation.
Deputy City Administrator, you joined the meeting? Yes, I'm not seeing you listed.
In progress. Thanks, Ms. All right, thank you for your patience. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Andrea Snyder, the Deputy City Administrator. With me here tonight is not our CFO, Robert Hamoud, but in fact, our Budget Manager, Susie Moncel, who will be coming up here in a little bit. We are here to talk about the proposed 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Plan. Tonight, we will be going over the direction that we seek from you this evening, a little background on the CIP process to date, doing a quick overview of the draft CIP itself, and then we look forward to any discussion and feedback. The direction that we're seeking tonight from council is whether the proposed CIP seems to respond to the council's goals and outcomes for this process so far, and if not, what can be improved. We're also seeking any other feedback council has to offer on the projects within the CIP, specifically the stormwater projects within the CIP, or how the criteria were applied to these projects. As I think you're all aware, the council committees have divided up the work of reviewing the CIP, and the stormwater section of the CIP is the one most pertinent to this committee. There's been a few changes since the last Capital Improvement Plan. The city goes through a big update of the Capital Improvement Plan once every two years, and there's been a few changes which have caused us to rethink how we look at it and the process that we use to draft it. So I just wanted to go over some of those changes really quick to understand how different the CIP might be than ones we've had in the past. First, since the last CIP, we established a capital finance community task force, and that task force had a bunch of recommendations for the city, which we've really tried to fold in to this CIP and inform the creation of this CIP. So one of, this is just a small summary of the recommendations. They had many more recommendations that I linked to in your memo this evening. But they recommended the city do more to invest in infrastructure, including pursuit of new revenue tools. It was a finding of the task force that the city did not have enough existing revenues to cover all of the needs of infrastructure that we have. They also recommended that mobility or transportation is a first priority of the city. And then they recommended, and this is actually incorrect on this slide, but they recommended a TBD sales tax to fund the infrastructure. At the time, what was discussed was a 0.2% sales tax. I think some well-intentioned little elf tried to fix that for me. That's not correct on the slide. So they recommended a 0.2% TBD sales tax, and that is because that was the tool that was available at the time. Since the task force has met, new revenue tools have become available to us as a municipality, thanks to action from the state legislature. So we'll talk about that 0.1% again in the future. They also recommended parks and trails and facilities, that they were also really important. So maybe they're not the first priority, but they're also really important, and we should figure out ways to make more investments in those things. The other thing that's happened since the last CIP was created is that we've developed more criteria, a couple of new criteria, and improved upon the criteria that we had for evaluating the projects within the CIP. And we're going to talk about that a lot tonight. One of the other things we've done with the criteria is we have added red, yellow, and green grading, so different thresholds for how well a project might meet each of those individual criteria on. And before, we just had a checkbox method. So is there an environmental benefit to this project, yes or no? And so we really tried to raise the bar on ourselves in how we evaluate projects and what our projects actually accomplish towards our goals. Speaking of those goals, I'd like to invite Budget Manager Susie Moncel up to talk about the goals that council established and what we've done to try to address those goals for this process.
Hello. So I'm going to go through the umbrella goals fairly quickly and spend a little bit more time in some of the other goals in terms of how they've been addressed through the CIP process. Sorry, I'm shorter than Andrea. So the umbrella goals included, now I feel it's too loud, at the top of the Goals and Outcomes document, included realigning the Capital Improvement Plan, or the CIP, with community aspirations for the city, as well as in adopted plans. I will actually briefly speak to that one, in that we included in the document this time, in the CIP, a matrix at the beginning that listed out which city planning documents had identified projects, if they were identified, and other city planning documents. The other, the next umbrella goal was provide a transparent CIP update process that allows for groups and individuals to engage in the process. We've worked hard throughout the process to bring boards and commissions in, well, boards in particular, a bit more than we have in prior CIP updates. This time around, we met with the boards early in the process to do a board summit, particularly on feedback around the selection criteria, and then we met with them again once the CIP was transmitted to council, to get their feedback on how that criteria was applied. The next umbrella goal was reforming project planning and delivery for improved efficiency, equity, consistency, and predictability. I'll speak a little bit more to this one in the next slide. And then, of course, addressing current laws and best practices. So the goals that were throughout the document, not the umbrella goals, but within the document itself, included projects have a clear path to inclusion in the CIP. So this is really where we tried to work in the other city planning documents, to bring in as many of those as we could identify, as well as including the boards and commissions throughout the process, as well as revamping the selection criteria, as Deputy City Administrator Snyder mentioned. The CIP process and priorities are communicated clearly with city council and community. This is really where we've tried to work in the boards and commissions, but our next step on this is we're looking at post-adoption as well, although I should mention, we do have a public hearing next week. But we, one of the tasks that we identified within the Goals and Outcomes was post-adoption, building a transparent and hopefully interactive, probably dashboard of those adopted projects to make sure that there's a different way besides just a 200-page document that you have to flip through one page at a time, for folks to see what the city's capital investments are over the next six years. Projects have an accountable path toward execution and/or completion. Spoke to this one a little bit on the last slide. Equity is inherent in the project selection and delivery. So for the first time, we did include an equity selection criterion in the process. And this was worked, developed closely while working with the Equity Board, as well as some discussion with the council early on in the process. And finally, that we have clearly defined funding strategies, and that is going to be a large topic at the Committee of the Hold next week in particular. A few of the items we've discussed with the pertinent council committees prior to this tonight, but the heart of that discussion with the full council will be on the 12th next week. So with that, I will turn it back.
Thank you, Susie. Readjusting the mic. Just kidding. So how did we get here today? I wanted to go over the CIP process and the process that we followed. First, as you know, we started on refining those criteria back in January. So we met with city council to get your feedback on the criteria. We also asked four of the city boards, that would be our Environmental Board, our Equity Board, the Transportation Advisory Board, and our Park Board, on their feedback for how the criteria should be revised, if we're missing anything important. And they provided some great feedback, which we're going to go over in a little bit. Then we took the draft CIP back to those same four boards, and we asked them for their feedback. How do you think we applied those criteria? Did we do a good job? Did we miss something big? And then we are here, in that black bold font, with council committees reviewing sections of the CIP. Talked about how stormwater is pertinent to this committee, of course, mobility and infrastructure has transportation, et cetera. Then next week, on June 12th, there's the Committee of the Hold to discuss the entire CIP altogether and the policy questions for the entire document. And then we look forward to council adoption. We are asking for council adoption by July 1st, as that is what state law requires, that the Transportation Improvement Plan, which is a component of the Capital Improvement Plan, that that TIP is updated by July 1st. So that's what we're aiming for here. And want to talk a little bit more about those criteria that we discussed. Many of these criteria are similar to what we've had in the past, like legal mandate or addressing life and safety, but we've added those red, yellow, green thresholds. The more complete description of these are in your packet, so you can take a look at those. We also got some, we also have new criteria. There's the Equity Criteria, which is brand-new to the city. We have a new Equity Board since the last CIP was adopted. And council also asked us to add longstanding commitment criterion, which in January, at the January retreat, council said, "We'll define it later. We kind of know it when we see it, it's difficult to define." And so we'll be addressing that in the June 12th Committee of the Hold, so that all council can have that discussion together. So some of the feedback that we heard from boards on the criteria and on the process that we've followed to date, overall, we've heard support for the process and criteria from our boards, but we have heard some concerns over that longstanding commitment criterion. Because it wasn't defined like the others were, they just had concerns that it didn't feel very transparent, that there might be some equity concerns with that, if city council feels like they've made promises in the past that they want to follow through but haven't considered equity within those promises, that might be concerns over that, that we're committing to decisions that were made without using a lens of equity. And they also wanted to add a criteria on livability and quality of life. They felt like the criteria really referenced our plans, our strategic plans, and other adopted plans, but they wanted something for us to take a step back and look at, making sure that these infrastructure projects really work to improve quality of life in Issaquah. And finally, we revised the Equity Criterion. I mentioned that we had added that new this year, based off of council feedback, based off of board feedback. We heavily revised that from the last time that council saw that definition back in January and February. So in general, for the CIP overall, not just the stormwater portion, there are some themes I want to talk about. Of course, we're not going to go over every single project, but there's themes throughout the CIP that I think are important to note. First is that we have more funding for maintenance programs than in the past. That was based off of feedback that we'd heard from council, from the community, and of course, from the criteria that we have established. We also drafted the CIP to respond to feedback to make them more investments in our infrastructure, while also taking extra care to make sure the plan is achievable. We've heard from the community, we've heard from council, do more for infrastructure, but also don't over-promise and under-deliver. And so how we have done that is this CIP anticipates new revenues for transportation, public safety-related facilities, and parks and trails over the next six years. And that is fairly ambitious. That's three new revenues that we're anticipating in the CIP. The only category of infrastructure that has revenue assumptions in it, actual dollars assigned, is transportation. And that's because of the proposed 0.1% councilmatic TBD sales tax, or Transportation Benefit District Sales Tax. We'll be discussing that a lot more at the Committee of the Hold next week, but that's the only, that's the only revenue assumptions that are actually baked into the CIP draft. The others, like parks and trails, for example, you will see in the CIP later on in 2027, 2028, more and more projects that are related to parks, and that's because we anticipate a new revenue source at that time, or at least beginning that, those conversations. So now focusing on stormwater utility projects that are in the draft CIP. We have 17 projects overall proposed in the six-year plan, and that's compared to 13 in our currently adopted plan, so a few more stormwater projects this time. And while council has yet to adopt the Storm and Surface Water Master Plan, we really wanted to take this opportunity to put some of those projects anticipated in the master plan into the CIP. And so the Storm and Surface Water Master Plan is coming before And so, the Storm and Surface Water Master Plan is coming before council, I think, in the next month for potential adoption, but this CIP does include some of those projects. The near-term priorities include Laughing Jacobs Creek, channel enhancement support, the Squawk Valley Park, South Creek restoration, and the Fish Passage Culvert Replacement Program, long names for stormwater projects. And so, we, we sometimes like to focus on those near-term projects because we really try to make sure that within that six-year plan, the first two, or in this case, the first three years of that six-year plan are pretty accurate. As you get further into the future, things are harder to predict, right? Revenues are harder to predict, needs are even harder to predict, but those first three years, we really try to make as accurate as possible to what we would expect. And so, those are the projects within our near-term priorities. Overall, in the stormwater category, projects generally scored well in climate resiliency or environmental benefit, that criterion, but it did have some, projects had some poor scores in legal mandate or addressing life and safety concerns. Though these projects also tended to score well in replacement or capital maintenance of existing infrastructure. So, sometimes things don't score well across every single category, and, and so, we have to kind of consider these things in balance. So, you've seen this before, but I just wanted to emphasize what the next steps are. Next week, we meet with the Committee of the Whole to discuss the entire CIP. That's when we anticipate to hold in those conversations that council's been having about facilities, really discuss the TBD sales tax. That's one of our main policy questions for council, whether or not council supports proceeding with that, and, and our general approach to revenues within that six-year plan. We also are going to have a conversation about that longstanding commitment criterion as well with the full council. And then, again, we will ask for a council adoption. I believe it's June 26th is the date of our next regular meeting where we ask for adoption. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Council President Walsh. Let me maybe ask a question of the chair. I have questions that are about specific projects. I also have questions about how we're rethinking the CIP. Do you have any preference on where we start?
So, I think because of the way the presentation was laid out, I was planning on doing the next part, the deliberations, more in the same, in the same format, so it would be the general comments and then project-specific ones. So, I think if you want to organize your questions that way, that'd be great, then we can move into discussion.
Okay. So, from a general theme then, I'm trying to look at this and understand how this CIP in the stormwater area changes from the previous CIP. So, the first question would be, how am I supposed to evaluate that other than just looking back at the previous one, looking at the new one, and assuming if something was in a past year that it did get completed? And anything that's new is, I don't know why it's new.
Great question, and I know that we have Public Works Director Emily Moon, as well as our Utilities Engineering Manager Matt Ellis on the line, so maybe one of them want to chime in on this answer, but I'm going to take first stab, which is, I, I think the main change is that we are incorporating more of these projects from the Storm and Surface Water Master Plan. So, this CIP benefits from that extensive community engagement process and from us being able to use data to reassess what the city's needs are. Our last Storm and Surface Water Master Plan is quite old, and so, this CIP is updated with the most current information we have and the most current public engagement process that we've followed. So, that's, I think, the main difference. That would be a bit more obvious to you if we had had a recent presentation on the Surface and Stormwater Master Plan, or if that had been adopted. That's coming. Council's had some presentations on that, but I know it's been a while.
Yeah, and I did see that Matt has his hand up as well, but I guess even beyond that, the question becomes, how would a community member be able to interpret that and understand why something is included, where it came from, what's its justification for being on there? So, I don't know if Matt has anything on that.
That's a good question. I don't think we have a, so we, some of the projects were prioritized because they were included in the CIP, the Stormwater Master Plan, as Andrea mentioned, but there's also projects that were required because of other improvements that were occurring, be it a transportation project or outside agency projects that just washed out. There's also projects that were a little bit more, we evaluated their applicability or opportunity for grants, and so, that was also evaluated to kind of shuffle projects and, and evaluate their priority in the CIP. But in terms of transparency about how it changed from the last CIP, I don't have a great answer for that at the moment.
So, another kind of larger question is the concept of, how do I know what's not here? And so, from that concept, if the idea was to be transparent about how something made its way from a plan into the CIP, how do I know whether everything made it in here? Or if things were selected for future years, how do I know why it was put on future years? If the criteria ranking isn't shown for those, how am I supposed to evaluate what's not here?
I think, Suzy, you might have an answer for you.
I'd have a partial answer to that. So, one of the challenges with the utility projects in particular in the CIP is we are due for a CIP, for a utility rate study update in the very near term. We're looking at doing one likely either at the end of this year, beginning of next year, to begin that process. So, for the utility projects in the CIP, we tried to realistically look at what we could afford based on the current rate structure through the current rate study, but we're going to have to take another deep dive into this as part of that rate study discussion that, once we work in all of these projects for really all three utilities, and we see what impact that might have on rates, along with the other pieces that feed into the rate study, that will be another council discussion point. But we're confident at least within '24, '25, through the end of the rate study, the current rate study, that we can support these projects, but it will have to be a continued discussion once we do that rate study update. It's weird timing with the CIP and the rate study update coming.
Okay. I'll save my feedback on those. I think those are my larger-scale questions. The rest are on specific projects, so I don't know. Do you have any general questions, or do we move to project-specific questions? I don't know.
So, I've already kind of had one touch with the CIP at the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee meeting. One, one place that we kind of spent a lot of time talking about was the criteria and how they were applied specifically, and whether or not we could document rationales for why something was given a green in its specific case, why something was given a red in its specific case, and we kind of talked about the trade-offs between, well, that would be a many-hundred-page attachment, and that would require a lot of work put into that. I'm curious if, but it did seem like there was some interest from the committee of kind of exploring that further, so I'm just curious if the administration has thought about that and are responding to that question at committees.
We have. We have discussed it more since that meeting, and I think the concern is exactly what you, what we talked about before, which is that the CIP is already a pretty lengthy document. We can, we can have a lot of narratives that would increase transparency. I'm not sure how many people are going to read those, and so, what we've tried to do to make it a little bit more concise and digestible is focus on the definitions of the criteria, how we define the red and green thresholds, to try to make it a little bit more clear when you line up the project descriptions, the plans that are linked to within the document, and the criteria descriptions, how those things all fit together. We do have some narratives from the submissions process of when the project managers submitted their projects into, into Suzy to create the document, but it's, it's a lot of information, and it's so much information, I, I think it's going to be really hard for the average person to sort through and digest. So, that's, that's what we've talked about so far in the organization. I don't know if Wally has anything else to add.
Deputy Council President, members of the committee, good evening. This has been a very elaborate process, more elaborate probably than was needed. We want to be transparent on all of our projects. We want to get community input. We have spent hours and hours over the last several months doing that. With that said, not every capital project is equal. Not every capital project has the community scrutiny that perhaps others would, as I think has been mentioned, our utility projects especially are difficult to try to prioritize, to engage communities with, and quite honestly, that's the beauty of master plans, is that we can then spend, spend many weeks, many months with subject matter experts and citizen committees going through master plans. So, once those master plans are in place, I mean, that is what we rely on largely to guide us, in addition to the facts that Ms. Montell mentioned, it's just plain old cash. So, we try to weigh that. I don't think the process is more exotic than that, quite honestly. I mean, we could tell you more about any particular project you care to hear about, but I think we're just trying to move forward with the CIP, recognizing all of the citizen plans that have been prepared, looking at revenue sources, doing what we can for revenue sources, and quite honestly, then raising a red flag in the case of transportation, where we say the needs, the priorities far exceed the available revenue sources, so here's recommendations for new revenue sources. And then, we look to the council committees, hopefully to pull out, I mean, whenever I see Laughing Jacobs Creek, I think of Victoria Hunt, because every time it's mentioned, Council Member Hunt raises issues for it. So, for me, as your city administrator, I could not find Laughing Jacobs Creek if you blindfolded me and asked me to walk to find it, but I know that it's a priority for one of seven council members, and so, as we prepare these documents, we, we try to be mindful of that, and that's what we depend on the committees for. So, at this point in the process, as the deputy city administrator said, we're happy to provide any additional information you'd like, but we also want to do a reality check as to where we are, of the scope of where these projects are. So, I've said my piece in that regard.
No, that was great, both of you, and I wonder if we might be able, well, I guess other council members will be able, will be able to watch that interaction just then, but I wonder if we could also include kind of a narrative explanation of that in the packet that goes to the Committee of the Whole meeting too, because I know there was at least one committee member at the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee meeting that really wanted to see that. That was great, thanks.
You had, you had mentioned earlier that there is some planning on how to make this more accessible, this information more accessible than a, you know, 150-page document. Could you explain a little bit more about where we're headed with that? I mean, I think that would go a long way towards giving people more accessible, usable information, but not necessarily like expanding the document to, you know, so many pages.
Yeah, so, I think most people are concerned about what's happening around me, right? They see something under construction, what's that, and what's going to be happening in my neighborhood? And so, we are envisioning something that's more GIS-based, more map-based, that could be interactive to click on, et cetera, so that you can find out what's happening at any given time, what phase of the project we're in, how much does it cost, you know, that, that type of information that's included in the CIP, document itself, but make it more map-based. And so, we're still in development of that. There's a lot of information I think we want to include in that, so we're trying to, trying to figure out a, a easy-to-understand but transparent and informative way of displaying that information.
Okay, great, thank you. Project-specific questions? That's President Walsh. Your thing. Okay, ST 14 and ST 45, so we've got the Bush Street Stormwater Improvements and the Old Town Stormwater Improvements. I note that ST 45 score is very high, but most of the spend is delayed until 2029, so I'm wondering whether, why the delay, and how the projects differ.
Thank you, and I see that, Matt Ellis, our Utilities Engineering Manager.
You don't need to raise your hand, Matt. We'll, 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 we'll find you.
Okay, sounds good. Sorry about that. Okay, so, the two projects, the Bush Street project is a subsidiary of the Old Town Stormwater Improvement Project. It's basically a small project to improve conveyance to the bio-retention swale that's in front of the community center. It was a project that had been, was impacted years ago and was unable to be completed because of the utility impacts, and so, the project would be to connect some of the stormwater conveyance pipes to that, that stormwater detention, or conveyance facility. The overarching Old Town Stormwater Improvement Project is a big project. That's probably our biggest stormwater project. It's, and it starts with a study. So, we've done the Stormwater Master Plan, but that didn't go into the nuances of each individual basin to the point where we get granular in terms of how are we going to solve the problem. And Old Town has some problems with infiltration. We've got the Cara, where we're trying to improve, increase water in our aquifer, but we want to do so in a thoughtful way where we provide treated water. We also want to, to evaluate opportunities for large-scale detention and treatment facilities in Old Town. So, that's why it's a long-range project. So, this isn't just, we have an idea, we design it, and then we construct it for next year. This is, the beginning part of that project is the study, and then, once we have that kind of defined, because we don't have a great answer for what the solution is, but we know what the problem is. So, the, the study comes first, and then, once we've kind of identified that study, and then that refines to a few specific design opportunities, and then we, we, we get that refined into a specific design, we go through the permitting, and that's why the construction is so far delayed, because that, that design through permitting, we're anticipating to take a fair amount of time. So, 2029 is the realistic approach for when we can actually break ground and do the construction.
And is the delay for permitting because we have to go to another agency for that?
There's going to be multiple impacts to different agencies, and again, that's, that's just an assumption, because we don't know what we're going to do yet. It's just a conservative estimate, so we don't under-deliver. We perform with the expectation there's going to be some delay for permitting. So, one, that there might be a gap, I'm sorry, my computer's not showing me, let me pull up the quest to get the actual project. I think one of those years is just assuming that we'd be going through the permitting phase for that, for that gap year.
Okay. Further on this idea, this, these two projects being kind of co-located and being connected to each other, I think it would be nice to be able to determine that when I'm looking at the CIP and understand their relationship to it. It also gives me a good question about, like, projects that happen in the same area. So, is there any information about, like, whether we would consider doing sidewalks at the same time if we're going to be ripping up a lot of street area, considering that is underserved? How, how would we understand that?
And I, I think, Matt, let me take this one, thanks. I, I think that comes back down to what we were talking about earlier and having something that's more map-based, right? So, there's the, there's the paper document that we have, and what we're looking to do upon adoption is translate that information to something that is a bit more user-friendly, that can be interactive and have a little bit more information on demand, knowing that people will want to see what is happening in a certain neighborhood, what's happening near them.
What about that second part of? What about that second part of, how do we, for something that crosses over beyond, hey, this is a stormwater project, but this is a really great opportunity to make sure that we have something in, say, the transportation section of the CIP to say, we're going to do sidewalks at the same time? How do we understand that?
Can I, I think the question is about, is about the actual implementation, not about the communication, which would be the, the map, but more like, how are you planning out when there is efficiency in doing two things because you're already working on that site?
And how do we know in either reading over this document, or whatever future document, that you're making those suggestions?
Right. And not all of those determinations have been made in this plan, right? Because this is a six-year planning document, it's not necessarily a budget. There's also a lot of ongoing maintenance programs that are in this plan. So for example, pavement management program is just one page, but multiple projects, and we plan those out as budget is allocated and as the year comes before us, right? So we create a yearly work plan, and that's when our teams meet together and say, okay, you're going to be doing the stormwater project over here, that's, this is a great time to coordinate for, and street overlay or what have you, curb gutter sidewalk. So we do that type of thing, not necessarily when we draft the plan, because that's pretty detailed coordination and planning. Sometimes we do that work on an annual work plan basis, and at that time, we would be able to show that in a GIS system of showing these projects that are going to happen in the same area and how they're related. So sometimes what I'm saying is that level of detail is not developed yet when we do the six-year plan.
Hi, this is Robert, the Chief Annual Officer. I just wanted to, to just make a comment on what we're working on in finance right now. So we're actually working on an interactive proposal for, you know, making the CIP live. So it's not just, it's interactive, but we're also trying to make it where you can look at layers, it interfaces with the GPS, there's a dashboard, you can actually drill by icons, and you can actually see one site that has multiple projects. So, and then we're trying to see a schedule where we would update that periodically throughout the year, so you're not waiting two years for that updated information. So that's, that's something we're actually developing right now in-house internally, and we'll have more information in the upcoming months, but that's, it is something where we will have that functionality, and we will actually be able to see cross projects and update information across projects. So that's, that's going to be part of what would be available at the website. So that is something we're developing, we're working with internally right now.
Chair Hunt, may I ask a question to Matt? So Matt, I, I think the core of the question is that communication that the engineering staff has with the operations staff when you are doing capital projects where the right-of-way is dug up. Can you talk a little bit about that annual process where you're connecting with the operations staff, so that there are, there are sidewalks that need to be improved, that there is that coordination, as I think Andrea mentioned, the funding for the, the improvement often will come from another account, will come from a maintenance account, but that coordination is done more or less on an annual basis than, Matt, at the beginning of a construction season?
A hundred percent. So, in, in a couple of ways, yeah, we're, we're one department. We have our operations, our transportation, and our utilities, but we are one department. We work side by side and hand by, hand in hand with each other, and we have different tools. Right now, we have a GIS interface where we are putting all our projects in one location. So that way, we can see where a project will be maybe overlaying the streets, so we can, hey, we need to, we need to replace the storm pipes in this section before they get going and overlay the road, or we need to replace the water line. So we're looking at that, looking at that from a complete street perspective, but from the Old Town perspective in particular, because this is a study program, or a study first before we actually get to the design, and a lot of Old Town does not have a complete stride sidewalk, where it's got gravel shoulders or things like that, but it's not as built up as other parts of the city. This is that opportunity, and that is something that we are absolutely taking into account, is how do we evaluate the cross-sections within Old Town? Does that impact or improve upon our stormwater? So it's not just a stormwater project, but this is kind of overarching into other categories as we look at other items that we need to replace within Old Town, because there's, there's pipes that we, water lines that we need to replace in Old Town. There's other street projects that we need to complete. So yes, we will be interacting and coordinating as we, we get this project in particular going, because it is a long-run project, and we do need to coordinate with our fellow groups in public.
So we still haven't hit on my issue here, which is really, I'm a user of the CIP, and I'm trying to determine from my standpoint, is, is that work going to get done, co-located, and also, do we have the money to do so? Are we, I know this isn't a budget, but when I'm creating the budget or evaluating the budget, I'm looking at this and saying, are we going to have enough money to do all the things? And if there isn't something that specifically says, whoa, we're going to tear up a whole chunk of this area, do we also, are we also planning to do the other infrastructure?
And the answer is, the standard operating procedure is yes. And so because it's a standard operating procedure, that's why you don't see it as part of a plan. You would see it as part of an annual budget. But it's a standard operating procedure, and again, I think Matt did an excellent job of explaining something that perhaps we haven't done as well over a long period of time in Issaquah, is that your engineers and your operation and maintenance folks now all work together. And so every community I've worked in, in various capacities, it was always a standard operating procedure that that evaluation takes place. And I think as Matt has said, perhaps it hasn't always been in Issaquah, but now that it is. And the way that the city council and the community knows that is not through a six-year CIP, it is through an annual budget. And as we present the projects in an annual budget, it is our responsibility then to connect the maintenance projects that will dovetail with that. And so I, I think, as we've said several times in trying to answer this question, having a little bit more flexible data on a website, not only for the plan, but we're also talking about doing the same thing for the operating budget. The operating budget, there's no one of a good purpose if it's a PDF document, 250 pages. So we've taken a long time to answer what was a relatively short question, so you have my apologies, but.
That's fine.
We're, we're doing what you want us to do.
Great. I have a few more that are just tick points. Looking at ST 051, the Meere Wood Park Pipe Rehabilitation, it says that the pipe is in poor condition and beginning to fail. I'm wondering why this is listed as 2027.
That is a good question. We've evaluated, we've, we've put in a, a camera into the pipes, they're old CMP pipes, but we believe that they are going to last until 2027 or longer, but they do need to be replaced in the future. This was originally slated as a stormwater rehab project, part of our annual program, but elements made this more challenging, because it feeds into a wetland, and it creates permitting issues, and there's also pipes that go in between people's side yards and through their driveways that make some challenges, and so we need to get that preparation going. And then we, we evaluated this compared to other projects, and 2027 was the time that it felt like it was a reasonable time to complete.
Great. ST 02, 020, the Isco Highlands West 45 Stormwater Lift Station Rehabilitation, again, long name. It seems to score low, but it's listed for 2025. Why was that added earlier?
That's a good question. It's a smaller project. This is just, it's mainly in operations, it benefits operations. So this project started, or the majority of the work was occurred in 2022 as we realigned that facility, but we, as we completed that project, we realized that there was some more operations work that needed to occur. And for the safety of our crew, we wanted to get that done earlier, which means that it didn't score as high, just because it was just mainly an operations functionality. It didn't score from the equity lens or from the habitat environmental lens, it was mainly just to restore or improve upon an existing facility. But it was also a small project where we figured we could get that done pretty easily. And again, just balancing other projects.
Okay. And last one, ST 018, Water Quality and Low-Impact Development Retrofits. I noticed that this one scored very well in equity, because it could help underserved neighborhoods, but at the same time, it's something that's listed as needed throughout the city. So I'm wondering, is there a way to work to customize how the project gets implemented so that we do satisfy that equity component rather than just being applied anywhere?
This is a great question. So we talked a lot about the equity criterion, and it was one of the things that we talked with the Equity Board about a lot, how are we applying this criteria in this draft? Do you agree with how we've applied it? What are your suggestions for the future? And to me, equity is, is, this is our first time going through this, right? And there's different ways to think about it. And so how we defined what could hit that green threshold or highest score in equity is whether an improvement specifically targets a population that has been underserved or hasn't benefited from equal access to services. And so for projects that are a bit general, or, or benefit everyone, that's not targeted. So even though they may benefit lots of people, even though people may be, you know, more impacted of certain populations, we, it's difficult to apply to projects that really do benefit everyone, or ongoing programs that benefit everyone. And so what we've done is tried to look at it from a gaps analysis basis. So are there areas of town that have poorer quality pipes and mains that we know are breaking more often, that we know are poorer quality? Let's address those first. So that's, that's how we've tried to address the equity criteria in those types of infrastructure projects. And that includes water mains and other things, too. We've really looked at, what are the areas that have more breakdowns? What are the areas that have poorer quality or aging infrastructure, and how to focus on those areas first? That's how we've applied that criteria.
And I appreciate that, and I agree with that being listed as a high equity. I'm wondering, how do we then utilize that to make sure that the implementation follows through on that? Because the project is also listed as something that is needed citywide. So is there anything that we need to either, Matt has his hand up, either include in the project description, or, you know, because there's going to be a new council at some point, and how, how are we going to keep that in mind when we go toward creating that project?
So this project in particular, what we are doing is we're, we're creating a GIS map of our untreated areas in the city. So that way, we can highlight and identify all the, the stormwater that comes, that hits our roadways, and then go straight into catch basins, and then on its merry way. So then we can identify the priority locations where we don't have water quality treatment, and then systematically apply for grants and replace or put in water quality at those locations. So as we look at that, we can look at it not only from a citywide lens, but also from an equity lens. So that tool is particularly what's going to help us, and not just identify through our, our old maps where we need water quality, but we can, we can look at it systematically and fully.
And I would add that we've been talking about equity more and more, and what we've talked about is that the CIP is not the only place we need to be thinking about equity in our infrastructure. We need to be thinking about it in our master plans, and incorporating equity principles in our master plans. We need to think about it in the CIP, and we need to do that in the budget process and in the work plan process. And so what we're looking at tonight is just one snapshot of one moment in time, and what we really need to do, and I think our goals as a city, is to incorporate it into everything that we do, how we think, our daily practices. And that's, that's, I think, the road that we're on, that's where we're pointed, and so I look forward to our future budget discussions and how we can ensure that equity is embedded in those budget, in the proposed budgets. And that's, you know, this CIP is just one snapshot of a larger process, where we definitely need to act on our equity principles.
Any other questions? I have one question. There are 17 projects in the proposed six-year plan, and as you mentioned, it's compared to 13 in the adopted plan. I was trying to kind of cross-check this against the budget. It's a little bit difficult in its current state to do that. Are there 17 because of the scoring, or is it because of a combination of available budget, and that's why?
Yeah, it's a combination of things. It's a combination of, you know, 17 projects doesn't define the size of the project, right, or how much it costs. So it is a function of budget, it's a function of scoring, what we can actually accomplish given our work plans. It's also, it's also because of the master plan being adopted. So it's, it's a number of factors.
Thank you. Any other questions? At this time? Okay, great. I will check in, I will mention for the record that there are still new members of the community in the audience for public comments, or is there any members of the public online for public comment?
Chair Hunt, we, we do have a virtual attendee. Don't see a virtual hand raised at this time.
Okay, well, I'll give it a moment in case that person would like to make a comment, so I'll just pause, and then we will. Okay. No indication that the community, that community member wants to make a comment, so we'll move on to our deliberation then. I think there's a lot to be said, so maybe we can do general comments or comments on the criteria first, and then comments on the specific projects and the content of the CIP. Okay. So let's start with general comment. Okay. I can start us off then. All right. So I think that the interactive version, the layers and the ability to get information based on where you are, where your neighborhood is, look at what projects will be occurring in the next couple of years in, in your area, I think that will make this information a lot more accessible. So I'm very excited about that. I think it'll make it more accessible for us as decision-makers, but also for the community, which is very important to our process. And so that was, that was really exciting to hear, and I look forward to seeing that as a tool that will be very useful. One issue that I continue to struggle a bit with, with the CIP is it is hard to track how, how long projects have been in the CIP, but kind of slipping in the timeline for various reasons, I'm sure, but I think, at least from my perspective, that was the intent of the, the longstanding council priorities, criteria. I completely agree with the comments that were made by the Equity Board. It sounds like that there was concern about that criteria, because right now it doesn't have any, it is not transparent, it just says that council will work on this, basically. So I, I completely understand why that would be concerning, it's not defined. I do think we need to define it, but the, for me, that is important, because the criteria on, the criteria on the community priorities talks about things being in a plan as a near-term priority, and it, and the longstanding priority is to address the sort of opposite issue, which is that it's been on a list for a long time, it is a community priority, but it's, for various reasons, very difficult to implement, and so it has been not, not implemented. So I think the example would be the Squawk Mountain sidewalks. That's in a CIP that will, in a part of the CIP that will be reviewed by a different committee, so I won't get into that project too much, but I will just mention that was in this walk and roll plan that was, I think, 2014, and so it's, it's in a plan. And so it's, it's in a plan. It's not a near-term priority, I think, because it's, it's just been in a plan for a long time and it's a very difficult project. And we are now prioritizing it, but that is a good example of the kinds of thing that we need some sort of criteria to address. And maybe we work it into the, the one, the community priority criteria. But I do think we need to have something other than a near-term priority in a plan because it is really these longer-term priorities. And they are, in the current CIP, it is hard to see those. So, let's see. In terms of the projects, oh, one other thing on the equity criteria. I appreciate that it's the first time and I, I appreciate how much thought has gone into this and all of the work of our volunteer commissions. And I think this is a really important addition to our process to have this equity criteria. I did note that there are no projects that are red. So we only use two of the three criteria for that. It's the only criteria that that is the case. And so I think that means next time, again, this is the first time, but next time it might be worth, now that we've done the CIP, might be worth assessing what those different levels are so that we are using the whole spectrum of criteria as we do for every other criteria. Onto the specific, no, I will save for specific projects. So do we have any other general comments from my colleagues on the committee? That's President Walsh.
Yeah. So kind of starting from the overarching or the, the goals and outcomes for, in order to satisfy goal number one, it really, I, I, again, I have a hard time understanding if all of the projects from plans made it in. I think we did a really good job of saying for the projects that are in the CIP, where they came from. But that doesn't necessarily tell me that we've considered everything and we've checked the box and made sure that everything possible is considered. Which I guess I would have liked to have seen those, I guess, in future years. And maybe it didn't get included in future years because you guys are gonna, were gonna do the rate study. Maybe that's why, because there weren't any stormwater utility projects in the future years, which seems a little bit weird to me. So, yeah, I'd like a sense of, did everything make it? And a reason for why something potentially went on the future years or didn't make it in because it failed criteria? Because if nothing's failing the criteria, then we're probably not using it correctly. I'd also like to have a notation on a project's page if the proposed timeline was adjusted so that it could be coordinated with another project or agency. That just gives transparency for, if something has a high score but is pushed out because there's a need to coordinate, that would be really important for me. I also would like to see something added to each project page to indicate when it was first included in the CIP. I think that gives a sense of what, you know, how long have we considered this? And that also goes somewhat toward goal number three, projects have an accountable path toward execution or completion. Because that at least tells us we're not, if we, if this was originally proposed back in 2014 and was included there, we obviously haven't finished it in a six-year period. So we need to pay more attention to that. But further on that idea of projects have an accountable path toward execution or completion, I'm not sure how I would evaluate that or if there are any differences in this CIP versus previous CIPs. So that's something I want to discuss on the 12th. Does it, do we have a sense of, or are you? Go ahead.
I think one, if I may, I think one of the ways we've tried to address that is by putting in the project phases. So one of the things that we heard from council in the past was that the CIP project page would just have the name of the project and money and put it, you know, in different years and we would never describe, well, actually, these three years are still designed. We haven't even gotten to the construction phase. And, and so why is it some, why is it going to take this long? So we, we tried to address that in this CIP. It's different. You may note that there's actual phases for the, the larger projects that have a design phase or construction phase, et cetera. So that's one of the ways that we've tried to make that pathway more clear. But, but I understand your feedback and thank you for that.
Okay, maybe I need to look outside of the stormwater area to find some of those because I, I didn't see any of that in the stormwater, but that might make sense. Let's see, talked about longstanding needs, goal number three. One thing I would love to know, what was the hardest criteria for staff to either determine or agree upon for the green, yellow, red ratings? And does that indicate there should be any changes to additional kind of underneath criteria to give more clarity?
I, I can talk about that criteria all night. So I will say, I'll try to keep it brief. Two, two were really difficult. Equity being our first year and trying to make sure that we're defining it well and really in accordance with the guidance that our Equity Board has provided us. And then figuring out how to apply that. So that, that was difficult. We got some great feedback from the Equity Board that we look forward to implementing in the future. And, and also the environmental benefit and climate resiliency criteria. That was difficult because it attacks or it tries to, it tries to address multiple sides of environmental benefit and climate resiliency, habitat, ecosystems, et cetera. And so something may be good for climate, but maybe not good for habitats. So how do you weigh all that together? So that was something we also grappled with and have some good feedback from the Environmental Board that we'll pursue in the future.
Great. Let's see if anything else. I guess I would ask my fellow committee members whether we think the criteria resulted in kind of the correct timeline of projects. I had kind of highlighted, oh, that's into the project feedback, I guess. So I'll wait on that.
I'll be brief since I think lots of great comments so far and similar to, I think, a lot of what we heard at mobility and infrastructure, too. I will push back on a couple, a couple of things. I, I do think it actually, it does to me as like a policymaker user of the document feel nine-day from previous, like much, much better. And just the ability to see, I, I could see where you can kind of get into a conversation about, well, do they really have a clear path to inclusion into the CIP? And how am I supposed to evaluate that? And that makes sense in my head. But at the same time, I've been thinking of it as the desired outcomes that we all agreed on as part of our bull, bulls and desired outcomes chart are how we're evaluating that. So I've just been trying to think about it that way. And to me, it does seem like we're meeting most of these. The obvious one is, was brought up earlier, which is that longstanding commitment has no criteria and we have absolutely no idea what that means. It's, right now, it seems like it's a, you know, you know it when you see it kind of, kind of thing. And so it would be great for us to be able to really define that or consider morphing it in some way. So I'm sure that'll be a good conversation for us. I also, I think this conversation about the equity criteria is an interesting one. I, I actually was happy not to see any red, especially because red means that we're directly harming an underserved community. But yeah, maybe that's a conversation we need to continue to have with the Equity Board going into the future. I mean, you've probably pulled out so much potential things that we won't be able to do this CIP cycle, but we'll continue to kind of explore and consider moving into the next one to improve it again. And that might be a good conversation. Or are we evaluating it correctly then? And also time will tell, right? If, if a project happens and we find out actually there was some harm done to a particular community, time will tell whether our evaluation of that project was flawed and that will help us in itself, too. But that takes time. And so again, that's a conversation that I'll need to happen at the Equity Board. I don't think I have anything else that was new. Except for, yeah, supportive of doing the CIP in new and interesting and interactive ways. That's really exciting.
Project comments?
Yeah, so generally, I think this does a pretty darn good job for the stormwater area. I noticed that there are eight new projects. They seem to score pretty high. I appreciate that STO 43, which was just Storm and Surface Water Master Plan Implementation, was removed and then replaced with the actual implementation items. So that's certainly an upgrade. I think, you know, I could quibble with a few things, but generally. Yeah, I, I think generally it's good. My concern will be when we come to STO 18, the Water Quality and Low-Impact Development Retrofits, whether or not we can effectively target those in areas. Because in many cases, when we're doing a project like this, it creates opportunity to, you know, build a sidewalk or build a crosswalk or add lighting or something else like that because you're already digging up the road. And so being able to make sure that we target them to the right areas, I think, will be important. Yeah, and then I think the kind of other question on some of this concept is, is this the right number of projects in the stormwater area and how it compares overall? Because I know we did that thing for the strategic plan areas, showing like what percentage of the dollars and what percent of the projects come from each area. But because I haven't looked really in-depth into the other areas, I don't know if this growing by X amount is also matched by other areas or whether it became a larger component because of some criteria? Or whether it's just balance because these are what our needs are and there shouldn't necessarily be a balance between areas?
I'm sensing a question, so I, I'd like to chime in. So, so some of the criteria have, have, are factors that we consider, right? So when we talk about maintenance and replacement of capital assets, that was a criteria that we evaluated and overall look to projects that did more of that in the CIP. That's why we see it more in the CIP. But a lot of it is, is what can we get done and what's, what are the needs? It's driven by needs. We have heard input from the Capital Finance Community Task Force that there isn't a desire to spread the, the peanut butter, spread the investments evenly. There's a desire instead to focus on different types of infrastructure over others. And so we want to make sure with our utilities that we are meeting the needs that we have, that we're not being negligent in our maintenance or in providing for the needs that are there. But we're not looking to really focus on stormwater more than what the needs would suggest. And that's because we are trying to focus on transportation, mobility, as the community has directed us to do.
So overall, I'm pretty satisfied with what's out there. Thanks.
I am too, although you've just given me a question. So when we do a rate study, we're considering all of our infrastructure needs and abilities and then coming up with the rates needed to support that. Does that cover all of the known need that the city is aware of? Or do we have some sort of list of like all potential need and the rate study is going to cover X percent of all that?
So that, that goes back to the master plan. So the, the Storm and Surface Water Master Plan covers a number of years. I'm not going to know how many years off the top of my head. I don't remember. But it covers well into the future, several years beyond the, the span of the CIP. And we look at the, those master plans, especially for the utilities, to then determine what are the utility rates. So those master plans look at what are the needs now? What do we know about our maintenance needs in the future? And the other needs, you know, based off of projected growth, et cetera. So we look at all of that in the master planning process. And then the rate study examines, okay, what do the rates need to be in order to pay for the projects that are in the master plan? So that's generally how we, how we conduct the rate study. So then the rate study assumes, you know, having a certain balance, having enough money to pay for emergencies should emergencies arise as well.
No, thank you. That's good. Yeah, no, I don't have very, I don't have any particular project-specific comments. I think this is a balanced mix of projects for our utility needs. Well done, Matt and everyone who was involved in this, Dr. Moon.
Great. Well, so firstly, your comment about not wanting or, you know, being happy that we didn't see any red on the equity criteria, I agree. So I think one, one consideration for the Equity Board for next time around would be that we have these criteria for the environmental benefit where we have in the red that the project will have no environmental impact or will have negative environmental impact. And then for equity, the red is the project would result in disproportionate and unmitigated harm. And so I think since we never use that because we rule out those projects, as we should, I think as, as decision makers, it might be good to consider a criteria that is more, giving us more information like that and then adjusting the, the yellow so that we do see the projects filtered into those three categories more similarly to that environmental benefit criteria. Again, something for consideration, I know this was the first time we've done the equity criteria, that might give us a little bit more information as decision makers. So something to consider for next time. On the projects, I am very happy to see Laughing Jacobs Creek funded. I, 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 yes, I did talk about it yesterday when it was not on the agenda. So I do talk about that a fair amount. We are in a city that very much values salmon. We have salmon, coconuts here, salmon on our city's logo. It's salmon days, city of salmon days. We're a community that very much values salmon. And the coconuts, in particular, we have, I think, responsibility to do this project because they live their entire life cycle right in this watershed. They never go out to the ocean. So these projects are extremely important for the continued survival of that coconut population. And it is also very important for the Snokeomi tribe and for our other partners in the region that we do what, do our part to conserve coconuts. So very happy to see that funded and that going forward. Thank you for that. And then similarly, happy to see other projects that are in that stormwater master plan coming into reality in this CIP plan. And generally, yes, generally supportive of the stormwater part of this plan. I've had, I've had similar thoughts looking at the work plan as far as the timeline slipping. I understand that it is difficult because there are many reasons why timelines change. But I do think it's something that as we, as we continue to improve our process, that would be good to have more information about how the timelines are changing from one CIP to the next. If there is a reason that there's a, or if there is a delay in a project, just to have that flagged in a transparent way. Or if there's a project that was in the CIP, didn't get grant funding, for example, and is no longer in the CIP or is in the CIP with a different timeline, those sorts of things, that's helpful for us, I think, as council members to, to understand. So that continues to be something that I think we could work on adding. I do agree with Councilmember Hall that this, the criteria and the way that it's laid out this year is a big improvement and gives us a lot more information to work with. So I really appreciate that. Those are my comments. You have any other last comments? You have what you need from this committee on this topic?
I do, thank you very much.
Great. Great. Well, that is our second of two items. And are there any announcements in the committee?
Just to note that your July meeting has been canceled. So we'll see you.
So July 5th meeting, regular meeting had no items. So this time is canceled. Thank you for that. And there's no announcements. Then there are no further business. And this meeting is adjourned at exactly 8:00 PM today. Thank you.